Hello and good morning, not good afternoon, to the Glendale Arts and Culture Commission meeting on September 28th. Can we have roll call please?
Commissioners Sahakian.
Here.
Sharikian.
Yes.
Vidor.
Yes.
Chairperson Oshigan.
Yes.
For the record, Commissioner DeHovenessian is not present. The agenda for the September 28th special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on September 25th, 2017. Item two, consent items. At 2A, approval of regular meeting minutes from August 17th, 2017.
You have any issue? Yes, please.
Okay, just a couple minor things. On item five, I think it's 5A, where you mentioned that a letter came in, maybe it would be good, since we mentioned the letter, to indicate it was, rather than, say, regarding, say, supporting.
Okay.
Okay. And then down on six, let's see, it's, just wanted to mention that it's Kaifan Coffee Company, it's all caps, K-A-F-N, is the name of the place.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay. And then one more minor thing, on the newsletter you mentioned, it's not an arts newsletter, it's a coffeehouse newsletter, but they include arts events, so it's including local arts, as opposed to, you know, the whole thing being local arts. That's it, thank you.
I move to approve the minutes?
Yes.
With those amendments?
With those amendments, yes. We have a motion, we have a second, thank you. Can we have roll call?
Commissioners Sahakian.
Yes.
Sharikian.
Yes.
Vidor.
Yes.
Chairperson Oshigan.
Yes.
Item three, introductions and presentations. At 3A, library arts and culture events presented by Chek Weick, community relations manager.
Good morning, Chair, Oshigan Commissioners, City Staff. Here are a number of upcoming events at our libraries. I'll start out with the month of October. We participated in something called the Big Draw LA. This is a month-long series of intentional drawing experiences for children and families. It's part of a larger international The Big Draw community, where people create and become inspired together. So we have a variety of programs, most of them this year involving children and families. We've done teens, we've done adults, this year it's pretty much kids. Some pictures from last year, various artists, cartoonists, animators, authors have come in. So that's the entire month of October, and if you go to our website, you can see a list of all these great, great events for families. Luke Elton Smith is an artist, he's got an installation called Migrant at the Adams Square Mini Park Gas Station. That will run through the middle of November. There's a nice night shot of that. We're very, very proud to present Wake: The Afterlife of Slavery at our Reflect Space at the downtown Central Library, that runs through November 5th. It's an exhibition tracing a jagged narrative of slavery in the United States, from the slave trade to the present. A number of artists, scholars have been involved with this. It's really, really a fine work. At Brand Library, they have a real fun event, that's part of a greater cardboard challenge, but they're gonna, they're gonna be making masks up at Brand Library as part of this cardboard challenge. They're using recycled materials and the imagination to create things. That's Brand Library, Saturday, October 7th. We do have a number of events here and there at our sites, a couple in particular, there's a, now, a regular painting group that comes to Brand, or to the Montrose Library on Mondays now, in the mornings. So we're kind of, it's kind of been fun to see how that has developed over a little bit of time. And then the knit and crochet, we actually have a number of kind of knitting, crocheting groups, but this one's been pretty steadfast, and they're gonna be at Montrose in October. The Friends of the Library have partnered with the Glendale International Film Festival, so there are a number of events at our downtown Central Library that they, they're co-sponsoring. There's some screenplay reading, there's a talk with filmmakers and writers, and then there's another evening with just women in film. Those, not all the events, but those are the ones co-sponsored with the Friends of the Library. A very popular film series at the library is Jewels City Noir. That's a partnership between Mona, the Museum of Neon Art, next door to the downtown Central Library, and the Friends of the Library. They've had great crowds, they do it on the third Saturday of every month. They're gonna show the film Gun Crazy on Saturday, October 21st. We use Eventbrite for ticketing, and they, they always have well over 100 RSVPs, and they usually get that, that number or better at the events. Coming up, we have a couple of good authors. Maggie Steefvater is a young adult author, she's quite well-known, she's got a new book out called All the Crooked Saints. She'll be at the library on Saturday, October 14th, downtown Central. And then an interesting one, it's a biography of filmmaker Ishiro Honda, known for, well, among other things, all the Godzilla movies. So Steve Riffel is a former LA Times columnist, he's going to be there to talk about his book on Ishiro Honda. He's going to show the film King Kong vs. Godzilla, 80 minutes, all in English. It'll be a lot of fun. That's Thursday, November 2nd, so I wanted to squeeze that in there, because I wouldn't see you until the next meeting. You may be familiar with this, it's called a Public Art Master Plan. We have a, the first major public event associated with that, it's a pop-up public art workshop, Wednesday, October 18th at 6:00 PM. It's next door to the Central Library at the Adult Recreation Center, and it'll be a fun, interactive, pop-up workshop. Glendale residents will have the opportunity to learn how public art can improve the quality of life throughout the city. This workshop will allow participants to share their ideas about the future of public art in Glendale. Of course, the attendance is free, there'll even be a play zone for people with kids. Again, October 18th. There's a fun tour with Jomi Wilson up at Brand Library and Arts Center, you can tour the historic Brand Library and Arts Center, Saturday, October 21 in the morning. She's done this a few times, you know, you get to walk through the building just before it opens, and she'll give you a good idea of what, what it was like back in 1904, and how the renovation kind of brought a lot of that back to life, and then some of the more modern aspects of it also, because it's definitely a working, working library and concert hall.
Those are all pictures, aren't they?
Yeah, they're lovely pictures.
No, but I mean, is that Eben?
That's Annette Vartanian.
And Alan.
Yeah, actually, it's all library staff. And we didn't have to pay them any.
Library staff slash models, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So again, tour the historic Brand Library, October 21. Finally, just to end, downtown Central Library, if you'd like to get ahold of us about anything related to the Arts and Culture Commission, please do call us. Do come in and visit, we're open seven days a week at our downtown Central Library. We've got a website there and a phone number. That's that. Thank you.
Thank you Chuck, any comments, additions, reflections?
Well, I'll mention that Jomi Wilson is, she's a member of the Brand Associates, she's planning to do the tours bi-monthly, I think every other month.
Right.
And she is a former international tour guide who has written a book called Coming Up on Your Left for tour guides, so she's, she's really good, and she's a docent at the Doctor's House as well, and a member of the Board of the Historical Society, and she's just a great docent, so, you know, I can't encourage the public enough to try to take one of her tours, they're really entertaining.
Would any of our commissioners like to tell us about Wake at the Central Library?
Yeah, I was gonna mention, one quick thing about Wake, so I urge everyone who is in Glendale to go to the library and see this new exhibit that we put up, and I'm very proud to say that we have Pulitzer Prize-winning photographer's work from Post Katrina Disaster that is kind of the present-day situation that is connected to way back from the beginning of, of the slave trade. And not only in terms of the content, that we have really, really good artists and photographers in the show, but also in terms of, we were able to print Clarence Williams, who's a photographer, his work is the largest format possible, I think, on the West Coast, that I found out, in terms of a darkroom print, it's like a five-by-seven actual darkroom print. So in and of itself, the print itself is an object that stands on its own, and plus the work there is about this, this critical issue that we all face, I think, whether you're African-American or not. So I urge everyone to go, to see it. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I went to the Bryan Cranston event at the library, I just wanted to mention that. It was like an amazing event, it was packed, the whole library floor was packed with people, he was a really, really great entertainer, and I think it's just like really amazing that the library is, is able to connect with such high-profile authors and actors and people like that, and I think there are further plans to bring further people of that caliber to the library, so, thanks for doing that. That's, that's, those are my comments. Any more comments?
Oh, we're doing comments? Okay.
Although, on the events and things, or if you attended something, you'd like to have a reflection on it.
Yeah, absolutely. Brand 45.
Yeah, Brand 45 is.
Which I know, I was leaving as you were coming in. It was quite a large crowd, I heard.
Could I just interrupt for a second? I think if you're commenting on, on events that you've attended, the more appropriate time to do that would be at Commissioner Comments. I think at this point, we're inviting comments about upcoming activities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next.
Item four, oral communications, there is none. Item five, business agenda at 5A, discussion items. At 5A1, Public Art Master Plan update, Barbara Goldstein, Cars Goldstein.
Yes, this report is an update of the Public Art Master Plan project from the work plan, which has had recent activity, and as I mentioned just a minute ago, there is a pop-up public workshop scheduled for October 18th. I'd like to call Barbara Goldstein from Cars Goldstein.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you for having me here, and City Staff, it's great to be back. I've spoken with each one of you individually, as well as, well, since the last time I was here, I've had, I've participated in more than 25 one-on-one or group meetings, and a lot of things are coming together, a lot of ideas are coming together, and we're really excited about what's going to be rolling out over the next month. I'm shooting a PSA today for the Glendale Television Station. There are going to be multiple signs going up that invite people to think about where public art could be, and we'll be having our workshop on the 18th of October, as was mentioned. What we wanted to do with the workshop was to do something very active. We will be doing first, a very brief slideshow of public art and what it means, what it consists of, what the opportunities are, and then we're going to be breaking people into four activity groups that they will be able to participate in and share their ideas. And the four groups that we're thinking about now, and I'd really love your feedback on this, it comes out of the emerging themes. One activity group is going to walk around the Maryland Arts and Entertainment Corridor and all the alleyways that connect things between Mona, the Arts and Entertainment Corridor, the ACE Artist Housing and Gallery, and really think about how could public art animate and connect all of those pieces. This is a part of Glendale that has come up repeatedly in conversations. The second workshop will be thinking about where temporary art can be placed, and what types of art could be placed to animate Glendale with changing exhibits. So those could range from things that are commissioned, to artworks that are brought in, Sister City artworks, there could be a whole range of things that could be happening, other installations like the gas station installation, but really, that group will be focusing on where changing art can happen, what types of art should be thinking about, and even partners that could become involved. The third of the pop-up workshops, pop-up activity items will be looking at gateways, the idea of art marking gateways to Pasadena, Pasadena, I'm sorry. You work in so many different places, you begin to get confused, I'm sorry. The, the idea of gateways that help people with entering Glendale is very important, especially because Glendale is so prescribed by freeways, and also, you know, just thinking about what you see when you enter the city. There are a number of sort of small monument signs that say, "Welcome to Glendale," but they really don't make a big impression. And then the fourth one is the idea of citywide festival. This one, there have been two different perspectives. Some of the people that I've spoken to think it's a really great idea for Glendale to have some kind of signature festival. Other people that I've spoken to have said they don't think that that's where the Urban Art Fund should be directing its, its money. It kind of doesn't matter, in one sense, in that if the idea of a festival is good, even if it's determined that the Urban Art Fund is not necessarily the right way to fund it, it, having a major festival is a public art event, and it would be worth teasing out what people are thinking about it, what something like that might consist of, and where it might be. So those are the ideas for breaking up and getting people to participate. If you have other thoughts about that, or, or thoughts about how we might frame that conversation, I would really be very grateful to hear them. And of course, we want all of you to be there, and we're hoping that we'll get some city council representation as well. Because we've invited all of the Arts and Culture Commission members, we are gonna make sure that this is posted via the Brown Act, because if you have more than a quorum of Commissioners, it becomes a commission meeting. We've asked Ara to welcome people to the commission, to the pop-up, and that kind of sums it up. So if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
It sounds like a great, wonderful, four, there were four, right? Four things.
Four, yeah.
That you honed in on.
Thanks.
You know, I'm sure you, you don't want to get into the weeds now, but are you going to spread us out amongst these different groups, or?
Yeah, one will be actively walking through the area of the Arts and Entertainment District, since it's right there. And then, because the Adult Recreation Center space that we have is pretty big, we'll break people into separate groups, we'll make it active, we'll have not just butcher paper for somebody to write notes on, but maybe we'll have opportunities with the map to, to place things on the map, or have people do something that's physical. I found that it's much better to get people actively involved than just talk to them and expect them to talk back. So the other thing that we'll be doing the next time we meet is, we will, we are hoping to be able to do a commission workshop where we can really dig into some of these things with you, and also, if we can schedule it, do a next advisory committee meeting. So that's where we are, and the goal is to have some kind of rough draft of a plan by the end of November, and then we'll keep going from there.
So I had a few questions. First, thank you for, it's a great presentation, a great summary here. So the, the first thing I want to ask is, I know one of the themes that came out very commonly is, we really love the cultural diversity we have in Glendale. So just looking at these groups though, I love our mayors and our council members and all of us Commissioners, but there's a lot of people that aren't on this list, so I'm wondering, what outreach are we doing to our nonprofit community, because we have a very vibrant nonprofit community, and what are we doing with cultural groups, you know, the Korean-American Forum of California, Glendale Latino Association, Armenian Cultural Groups, et cetera?
Yeah, that's a really good question. We had one focus group that was for arts, artists and arts organizations, it was not attended as well as we would have liked, and my feeling about that is, it usually works better for us to go to something that is already happening than for us to try to pull people together, because it, it's really hard to get people to come out on an evening. So I'm thinking that it probably would be better for us to do either one-on-one interviews or try to figure out ways to get to some of those groups when they're having their own meetings. If you have specific ideas about people that I could talk with, that would be really good. I know that Hayer made one suggestion of people, somebody that I should be speaking with in the Armenian community, I'm planning to start that outreach either on the phone or one-on-one over the course of the next month. But are there, do you know if there are any, I know that in a lot of cities there are forums where groups that have similar interests get together, do you know of any that are connected to the cultural organizations, do they have a forum?
There's one Armenian-American Educational Conference coming up, I know that there's a Korean-American gathering coming up as well.
Oh, great.
That I know will be well-attended, so I can email.
Okay. Can you email that? Because that would be really super helpful. If I can't get to that, then someone else from the Cars team will.
Great.
Thank you, yeah.
And then the, one thing I wanted to offer as well is, at our school district, we have, so we have Thursday folders, which some schools send in print home with the kids, and some do email blots, like digital flyers. So with our public art workshop, it'd be great if we can get that into the, you know, that.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
Oh, great, thank you.
Please do.
These are my outreach people.
Just please state your name. Tamara O'Connor from Community Arts Resources. As an adjunct to the workshop, we would like to be able to table the event on the 18th with, with arts organizations, because one of the issues that I think Barbara is finding, and as we find talking to people, is it's very difficult in the city for our, the arts organizations to talk to each other, and certainly to talk to you. So one of the things we thought we would do, and I sent this list over to Chuck and to Cindy, and I'd be happy to have you add on to this, are the arts organizations that we'd like to invite to be able to table the event, to do outreach of their own, so they can meet the public at large, and they could have some engagement there. So I'd love for you to be able to add that on, so I will email it over to you.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Awesome.
Thanks for reminding me. Yeah.
And, and then just lastly, we had a brief discussion about kind of the, while the focus may be downtown, but then doing these pocket things, so we have the Adams Square Mini Park, but also looking at like, the other side of South Glendale, so like Pacific Community Center or Montrose, so.
Exactly.
Has there been any discussion or themes with other kind of meetings about that balancing act?
Well, actually, we went a little tour and looked at some of the spaces that you talked about, and my thought was that during the pop-up event, when we have the conversation about creating platforms for changing art, or gateways and locations, that we will specifically try to tease some of that out, and we will have maps so that people can place it. We also have, on the website, we have maps, and we're asking people to actually mark on the maps locations that they think would be good for art. And one of the great things about that website is that it accumulates the data, so we'll be able to see how many people have mentioned this particular location, what have they said about it, and that kind of thing. It's really a great tool. So yes, absolutely, because I've heard, it's really a split. Some people say, "Focus all your energy around Brand Boulevard and the Arts and Entertainment District." Other people say, "There's already enough happening there, we should be getting out into the neighborhood." So this is what the workshop and the website is really about, is to help us to come up with that balance.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for asking, yeah. I have a question for you all. May I ask it?
Of course.
I was just in Montreal over my vacation last week, and Montreal has got a really, really robust media industry, and that media industry has become quite involved in creating what I would call artistic experiences in the, in the city, by doing things like creating tours that are augmented reality tours that are on apps, so that you can go and look at a building or a place, and you can see an animation that talks about the cultural history or the social history of that place, and they also have a lot of projections on their buildings. And what struck me was that Glendale has got this extremely robust tech and media industry, and that, even though you have a lot of money, the money that you have, you don't want to spend it all at once, you want to build partnerships with potential organizations that could be of help to, to really animating Glendale through art. And so what I was wondering about was, whether any of you have suggestions for us about how we might get the media and tech industry more involved in this, because it's, it's one piece of the puzzle that we haven't really penetrated yet. We are gonna be at Tech Week, we are gonna have the map and the website showing at Tech Week. It's more a matter of, how do we actually make that connection and begin to think about that? Because I think that that's a unique dimension that Glendale has, that we should be looking at. So if you have any thoughts, please shoot them over my way.
Do you, do you want that now or later?
Sure, yeah.
Oh, this is just one idea that popped into my head, and it has to do, again, with planning things for the future, so, I was gonna mention it during comments, but I'll, I'll mention it now. We're, at the Brand Associates, we're planning before the end of the year, and we certainly could accelerate it with one of our new board members, who's very connected into the industry, wants to get more people to the Brand Library, and she's planning an industry night.
Oh, okay.
And we could, since we're gonna do that anyway, just to, you know, have a little wine and cheese at the Brand and show people around, maybe we could, there's always wine, right?
Wine helps, yeah.
Yes, wine helps. Facilitates open discussion. That we could include some focus on what's going on at large with the Public Art Master Plan.
That would be helpful, yeah.
And, and focus that in, so the next time Deb and I meet, we could, we could have you come with us, or we could just email you about it. Or I could connect you with her, if you want to pursue that.
That would be great. Yeah, that would be very helpful, yeah.
Okay.
May I add? Hi Barbara.
Hi.
Thank you for coming by, this is great. Few comments regarding, some questions and comments that you made. On the list, I don't see any team or any group that you want to meet, like Disney Studios?
Actually, yeah, we tried to put together a business owners group with the, with the assistance of Economic Development, and we were unsuccessful, and so, at this point, what we're thinking about doing is trying to go to one of their meetings, so I think that's the best way for us, yeah.
The reason I mentioned that group is, they are the team that come up with great ideas.
I agree, yeah.
So they have a tons of information about, not just maybe the art generally, but they might have one person, and he can do a lot for us, so might as well put that one on there, number one. Number two, what refers to the groups or meeting with organizations, we also have business groups like Whole Food and New York Life, that their headquarters, and they have great establishment in the city, and they have some financial part of it, but they also have, they participate in the city. I'm not saying they're artistic group or cultural, but they also can influence or come up with some ideas. I would like to see some, maybe, invitation to come to those public meetings, so they can have their influence too. What refers to the tech, in the example that you brought from Montreal, during my work every day, I drive a lot, and I go different cities, from the beach cities all the way to Orange County, and I see a lot of things that they are generally probably copies of each other's cities, nothing different.
Right.
In order to reach that, what I would like to see, as part of this master plan is, what are we trying to achieve? A, are we trying to achieve? A, are we trying to achieve a Glendale art that it will be on the map for Southern California, or California, or nationwide? Are we trying to be something different from other cities? Are we trying to present something for our public, for the Glendale residents? Or are we trying to attract people from other cities? All those comments, all those approach is different method. You cannot do all at the same time. So, therefore, it's part of your Cars plan to have. If we're going to do artwork or concentrate on the downtown area, we probably have maybe one or two program. And that's how we can satisfy the visitors, the shoppers, the entertainment business. But we do have about 200,000 people living in Glendale that they would love to see their own art-
Sure.
-in their neighborhood. They don't want to drive to downtown traffic-
Sure.
-for example. So, in order to reach all those requirements, there is such a serious planning, and one of them is October 18th meeting.
Right.
And this is not an easy task. I can have zillion ideas, but the bottom line, will I satisfy my community? Would my community feel comfortable with those ideas? We don't want to have a rock and roll concert in the middle of park that nobody loved rock and roll, for example. So, what I'm trying to do, what we're saying, are we trying to achieve everything? Or are we trying to achieve specific things for the Glendale only? There's a need, and we're trying to fulfill that need. This much. Thank you.
That's what we're hoping the plan will tell us. Because we've heard a lot of, we've heard almost each one of those ideas as being a goal. I think ultimately, it will end up being something that has a little bit of each element, but our job is going to be figuring out what the priorities are. Can I just, I want to just get clarification on one thing that you mentioned. About the business groups, because we didn't have success bringing the business groups to us, and we want to go to them, are there specific business organizations that you feel that we should be reaching out to?
I can probably contact with New York Life.
New York Life. But are there groups that are business owners that get together in-
There's a big business association. I think they have an association meeting, or something like, what do they call it?
Chamber.
Chambers, Chamber of Commerce. I know there is one in Montrose area, and there's one in Glendale, too.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Good. Yeah, it would be great to be able to talk with individual, the heads of some of the bigger businesses as well. Thank you. Yeah. Anything else?
Just one more thought. Glendale Historical Society has partnered with the Brand Associates a number of times, because there seems to be a double-sided coin with, you know, architecture being the most public and permanent of art forms. You can't deny that. That it would be good, you know, not necessarily, it might be efficient to get the two together. Historical Society is a big group. They have, I think, seven or 800 members now.
Wow.
And they're people who are interested generally in the arts. I mean, some of them are very architecture and preservation-centric, but there seems to be a lot of spillover there. And I think that would be an interesting individual group to approach, and maybe just for efficiency, mix them up with some other groups, so you can, you know, have just one input session. But you'd probably get a pretty decent turnout from them, too.
Yeah. And I know that Tamara attended when you gave your talk to the Historical-
Yeah.
Society on Craftsman and announced the October 18th meeting. So-
Yes. Yes.
I think one of the things we really need to do is get the different organizations, and we're reaching out to them, to do an e-blast to their members about the October 18th event. Because then, we can get some of those perspectives when we meet as a whole.
Right. So, all the organizations, the library groups, and everybody's groups that they belong to have to kind of-
Right. Yeah.
Fire up.
Fire up. Right.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Couple of things I want to say. Being involved with Armenian American Museum, that's kind of one of the discussions about what is a 21st century museum? Because things are changing very quickly, and-
Right.
What's that balance between kind of in-person experiences versus digital? So, the reality, too, is when we look at our timeline, you know, the plan will be ready next year. By the time we implement, we're talking maybe five to 10 years over, you know, the period of the course.
Over five to ten.
So, the reality is that we're going to be much more immersed in digital within the next 10 years. So-
Right.
I think we do have to think about that. And also, from a financial perspective, I mean, structures cost a lot of money to build. So-
Right.
There are probably a lot of interactive art that we can integrate in the plan. So, it'd be great to see that and some options for that as well.
Yeah.
And then, on the other end of it, the, for Glendale Youth Alliance, we're a jobs program for at-risk youth. So, one of the challenges we have is kind of similar to the commission. You know, we do a lot of great work, but sometimes a lot of people in the community don't know what we do.
Know about it. Yeah.
And so, we set up a, kind of a lunch where we invited heads of different organizations, like 20 to 25 of them, and said, we want you to come in for this one-time meeting. It's not a, you're not joining a board, you're not joining a committee. We just want you to come in and just hear us out. And we just had a lunch at Castaway, you know, we had a great turnout.
That's great.
We had a youth participant come in and talk about his experience in the program as well. And we did a quick PowerPoint, just to kind of inform. So, I mean, with all these different groups that we're mentioning, even with the Chamber, or Downtown Glendale Association, for example, I think it might be good after the public workshop to consider that. That way, at least, we're giving them an opportunity to come.
Yeah.
If we don't get it, you know, if we only get 10 out of the 25, or, you know, whatever the number may be, at least it creates an intimate environment to have a good discussion.
I like that idea. I think that's a really good idea. Thank you. And so, that worked. So, I'm glad to hear that. Yeah.
Thank you.
If I can summarize, kind of, I think the feeling of the commission here, it seems like the outreach perhaps is not being done at sort of the intensity and the depth that we would like to see it, I think, if I'm right.
It's not systematic. It's not really systematic.
It's, from this list, I know that this is a preliminary list, but it's kind of low-hanging fruit in terms of what everybody sees. But, you know, like the KFC, the Korean Organizations, Armenian American Museum, other Armenian Organizations, Latino Organizations in the city, to make this plan work, we have to get everybody to buy in. Not so much to get everybody to give their opinion, because this is not the thing that they're into, but to have them hear what the plan is, and such that if something comes up next to their store one day, they're like, whoa, it's not that. Right? So, they're all bought into the plan.
Right.
And I think, as you said, we have a diverse community. You're going to have all kinds of opinions. And at some point, Cars and yourself and us together, we have to sort of say, you know what? We can't do everything. We have to focus on doing this. And this is what we believe. We believe this is what Glendale's future should look like, and from the arts perspective. And so, at some point, you know, perhaps not the 18th meeting, because that's kind of a meeting for everybody, but maybe we need to have another meeting afterwards. I don't know if this is in your plans, that will take all of these ideas, but then say, you know what? These are, like you said, these are the priorities, or these are the things that we believe this commission, we are here at this time with this master plan, we have hired you, and this is what we believe Glendale should look like in 10 years, and this is our plan. And then, at that point, it's not a meeting to take notes and compare ideas, but to say, this is the plan that we have.
Yeah. Thank you. Just to clarify, we will be having a meeting with our advisory committee that does that. We'll be bringing forward emerging themes for feedback, and then one when we have the draft plan. That's already in our work plan. A lot of the outreach that you're all suggesting is part of the whole rollout of the assets and public outreach that's going to start this month. I do really appreciate the recommendations, though, about the individual groups, about the idea of maybe bringing people together over lunch, and also the groups that we should be reaching out to. That's critically important. The reason that you see as many one-on-one meetings on there, and the smaller focus groups, is because I, the way that I like to work is to kind of figure out what the lay of the land is in terms of the political landscape, the administrative landscape, and hearing from the commissioners. And so, because that gives me a datum to work with. And so, all of the things that you're talking about are super important. And I know that Tamara's taking note of them. We're already thinking about a lot of them. And whatever suggestions you have, we want to hear them. So-
Okay. One more quick thing about the Montreal and the Tech Week. I mean, you know, I'm a big fan of tech, and I think really the future is in tech. And so, I really appreciate that, those kinds of ideas. And I'm sure you're going to be presenting some of those ideas on the 18th, and starting people to think, have people start to think in those directions. I think that's really important. So, I appreciate that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah.
Taking into consideration that we are working only on a plan yet.
Yes.
Is it within our right, or is it within our work parameters, to talk about the budget?
Absolutely. Yes.
For example, we know we have like roughly about $5 or $6 million. And if I'm looking for the future, somehow, I don't want to run out of money.
That's part of what we're doing. Yeah.
So, yes, we will have some plans. We will have some programs, some money. But at the same time, we need to generate money for this fund, for this purpose. So, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's the right moment now, but it should be in our work plan, or the master plan, to talk about generating income, or, you know, funds for those programs, of course.
Absolutely. Yes. Well, there'll be two phases to that. One will be that part of the plan will have an implementation plan that has prioritized projects, short-term, medium-term, and long-term, with a price tag and the funding source, which in some cases will be seek partnerships, you use some money to seed it. The other piece of it will be that we will be making suggestions about other ways that the city could bring money into the arts. Because the Urban Arts Fund is limited. The desires are unlimited.
Yes. Yes.
And so, there's a need to find additional money, because the Urban Arts Fund won't do everything.
Good.
Yeah.
I had one more question. Yes. I'm really happy to. Yeah. The website has been up for a while, and so, what is the information that you gleaned from whatever's been input into it?
Well, there's been a lot of activity around where art should be. There is a lot of support for things that are already in the works, like the gas station is getting a lot of support. There are suggestions for ways to support local artists. So, it's a very broad array of things. It just keeps populating. Every time we have some kind of outreach thing that hits a number of people, we find that people are going to that website. So, we're expecting great things from that. I've never worked with this type of interactive tool, so it's very exciting for me to see it in action. Yeah.
And we think it's reaching the kind of population that you want to reach.
Yeah. I mean, we have like one sort of question that is general, which is that I know that Cindy is looking into this. We're really thinking that we need to have some translation at the community meeting. And I know that one of the comments that we got on the website was written in Armenian, and my translator doesn't translate that. So, or maybe the translator on that website doesn't translate it. But the point is that if we want to be inclusive, and we're getting comments from people that are in other languages, that's important, too.
Right.
So.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Barbara.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. And we really appreciate your great work. Thanks.
Next item.
Next item.
Next item. 5A2, Recognition of Artists.
Chair Oshigun, Commissioners, City Staff, just to start us out, our recommendation, staff recommendations, that Commission wait for the final Public Art Master Plan to fully implement a recognition process for artists. So, summary, at the August 18th, 2017 meeting, Commissioner Shereikian suggested that Commission hold some type of recognition for participants in commission-sponsored programs, including the idea of an awards reception, a public relations piece highlighting the Commission accomplishments. I can take you back to the past, where Commission has recognized participants in a couple of different ways. The most visible that I could come up with was the Diamond Award, that recognized community members for their contributions to the arts. The last Diamond Award was presented in 2013. Additionally, city proclamations and commendations have been utilized to recognize achievements. In 2012, the Commission stated a preference for a recognition process that would allow Commissioners to request a commission-issued certificate to present to artists and arts organizations, as well as city proclamations and mayor's commendations. So, I've included a picture of the Diamond Awards, refresh your memory, and a copy of what was then proposed and accepted as a commission commendation piece. You have some options. You could definitely invite artists to these commission meetings also for recognition. You've done that in the past. You can invite artists to an annual commission event for recognition, and you can present a variety of certificates or commendations. The commission commendation does have a bit of financial, there's a financial aspect to it, just because it costs money to print them and get the little folders for them. Mayor's commendations and proclamations are free per request. So, staff is currently dedicated to the remaining 2015-17 work plan programs, and of course, the upcoming finality of the Public Art, Public Art Master Plan next year. We're anticipating that the master plan will be delivered to council in early 2018. So, that means you will have seen it. It will go to council, at which time staff can focus on development of a branding strategy. That can include a public relations video. That was also brought up at one of your meetings. So, those are your, kind of, the options we could come up with, and our suggestion to table this until the Public Art Master Plan is finished.
Any comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I agree that it would be a good idea to table both items until the master plan is more fully defined. And it seems like the, I'm not sure what Diamond Award meant, like what was the meaning of the word diamond? It just, you know, I think, I think we need a lot of time, and seeing how this Public Art Master Plan plays out, to think about how we want to do this. Because it should be something that has some gravity. And, you know, handing out awards with, you know, a small certificate, and, you know, multiple awards, I think is probably not as interesting as really deciding what deserves to be recognized, and how, and how the criterion is going to be figured out. And we can do that much better after the plan is fully realized. That's my opinion.
May I add something? My whole concept of this award or certification is the acknowledge, all those kids, for example, that they participate for the airport, the banner, for example, the first, second, third place, all the other artists that they perform at Brand Library, or everybody else, all the artists. So, therefore, if, yes, they are contractors somehow, we have budget for them. They come and they do work for us. But at the same time, it doesn't hurt to say thank you, to give them a certificate, or to give them an award. It's only a piece of paper, but the acknowledgement of they're doing good job from a group of commission, or the city, it just builds a good relationship. That's my approach. I mean, I'm not against, I'm not for it to delay to 2018 to 2019, but those are only acknowledgements. It's not like we're giving them a degree of any type of licenses or anything. But to say thank you, it's the best thing some people expect. If we don't, they say, well, we forgot about it. They didn't mention. But that's the whole approach of this idea. If we can, for example, if we have something coming up in the next few months, I would go for it. I don't need to wait till master plan. Because by the time the master plan comes up, it's going to be a long time. And before we start to implement it, it's going to be till 2019 we'll start. But meanwhile, we have in the past four years that there were artists, that they did an excellent job. Maybe we should have a group one time. I don't, I'm not saying that let's get them one individual certificate to all of them. Maybe we can have a cocktail event at the city hall entrance, and then we can do something like that. I mean-
Yeah. What I would suggest in the interim period is that we can send out a letter from the chair with a certificate attached. That's an easy thing for us to do.
Email them. Yeah.
And we'll, I mean, if everybody agrees, we'll certainly do that from this point on.
That's something more workable, you know? It's not, yeah, that's, if it's, it can be done, yeah. I mean, I don't want it this meeting, but maybe next meeting, you guys can bring the certificate or whatever, because we can read it, and we'll go on from there. Okay.
Yeah. Sean?
Well, I think from a couple of years ago when I joined the commission, there are kind of two-
there are kind of two things you learn. One, is that we're not a fund-granting organization. And so, you have a lot of different artists and different arts organizations coming up to you and saying, you know, we have this program that we do, and we want funding for it. But as a Commission, we fund, we select projects in our work plan, and we fund them through the Urban Art Fund and other funds, City Funds. So, the hard part is, what does the Commission do for the average artist in the community? And, you know, there's a lot of different art exhibit receptions and openings we go to, for example. And we don't really have much as a Commission, or individual Commissioners to offer, you know, those artists that are outside the periphery of any of our individual projects. So, you can, you know, the Adams Square Mini Park, you know, when there's an opening reception, or, you know, Two Fankeen Arts, for example, that's opening, and they're going to have different opening receptions. We don't have an opportunity to kind of acknowledge the work that they're doing, that have nothing to do with the Commission, but we want to acknowledge that they are artists in the City of Glendale, and they're benefiting the city. So, I think the certificates are a great way to do that. And also, I think, although it may be more affordable to work with the Mayor's accommodations, but it gets complicated, because then, we don't know which events the Council and the Mayor are already going to, and so, we're going to request a certificate, and then we don't know which is which, and it's going to create a kind of blurry line. And also, I think with a Arts and Culture Commission certificate that's separate, it also elevates the Mayor accommodation, City Council accommodation to be something separate, that will continue to be in their periphery. So, I don't know what the right timing is, but I think it'd be great to have some type of mechanism for the Commission to acknowledge artists in the city.
So, that's beside our own artists that we haven't recognized quite yet, yes?
And I think, you know, to what Commissioner, yeah.
Okay, so that's a second, that's.
Having a discussion about what that, what are the parameters? You know, which artists can we, should we acknowledge? So.
Okay, two different things, yeah. Okay, so I just want to make that clear.
What is the universe of acknowledgement? Is it shows, is it private events? Is it, you know, an artist who has an event within Glendale?
Right, I think we need a, yeah.
Or outside of Glendale, or?
Yeah, I think we need a discussion about what those, what's allowable, what the process for.
Yeah, we need to.
Yeah, yeah, to create some balance for this. Because we can get, it can get out of hand quickly, I can imagine, if there are no, you know, structure to it.
Right, leaving somebody out when you have a big spread is, can be worse than not doing anything at all if somebody's.
Well, we should probably first do the first one, acknowledge our own artists. Do we need a motion? I think it's a good idea to send out certificates, especially people who've been doing, for instance, the utility boxes. You know, I get the feeling, they do the utility boxes, and then, it's like, it's gone, it's like a vacuum afterwards, right? They get nothing from us, until they have to apply again, right? So, yeah, they get, they get paid, yes.
Even the performers at the Brand Library, that's our.
So, I think it would be, do we need a motion to, to set that, that kind of motion in motion?
I definitely agree with what Cindy Cleary said. If we can have a letter with a certificate, that will be the least and modest way to do it, I think. That would be excellent. I saw, I would move a motion, if it's possible, to send a letter and a certificate to the artist.
Well, I think we need to bring it back as an action item.
Yes.
Future.
Are we, or are we? We are the recognition of artists.
When you say artists, it's, who is it going out to, is the question?
I think you have it listed here appropriately, so if you want to take action on this, you may today. But I'm hearing maybe different structures, or different tiers of this, and it sounds like you're breaking it up into two tiers. So, the first tier, there seems to be clear direction that the artists that are hired by the city should receive a certificate of some sort. I think that's one part of the discussion. The second part is additional recognition for artists who are not hired by the city. It sounds like that part of the discussion still needs some development. So, you want to bring that back with some additional criteria as to what the selection process would be. So, if you wanted to split that up and have a vote on the first part, you may, and then direct staff to bring back additional information on the second part.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you.
So, the motion is only for the first part?
Yes.
So that we have a recognition for the artists that we've hired over the past two years, maybe, or some, some number of years?
And I'm sure we have a list, maybe.
Because we do have artists, actually, who don't get paid, who do things for the Commission, right?
Okay.
So, we have a motion?
Thank you. You made things easier.
So, I guess, roll call on this motion, we have a second.
Okay, Commissioners Sahakian?
Yes.
Shereikian?
Yes.
Vidor?
Yes.
Chairperson Oshigan.
Yes. And then, if we can put on an agenda item for the discussion of the second part of this issue, is can we have some kind of recognition for our different artists who are contributing to the life, the arts, arts life in Glendale? So, the Commission is always present. Whenever there's art, we're there. Yeah. We can talk about that next week, or next month.
Next month.
Next week.
Okay.
Any other comments on this issue? No? Next item, please.
Item five B one, action item. At five B one, work plan two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen.
Once again, Chair Oshigan, Commissioners, City Staff. Our recommendation is, basically, this entire, this four or five pages is to, in lieu of developing the two thousand seventeen-nineteen work plan, because of the Public Art Master Plan coming up, our recommendation is to use some of the remaining funds from the two thousand fifteen-seventeen work plan for a number of activities. Basically, to continue many of the events and programming that you've already done. I'll start off, I've got just a list of a few of them here, the Performing Arts, the Brand Library and Arts Center series. It's a great program. We need to put out a call for artists very early next year in order to get artists, or performers, onboard, selected, and scheduled by June. The program normally runs from June through the end of August, twelve to thirteen weeks. We have a, the normal two-year budget is fifty thousand dollars. The expenses have been less than that. We have forecast some, what we think are the regular yearly expenses. I might add, as a bookend, that the Brand Associates also contribute funding for that series, as well as some other events at Brand Library. But again, I just remind you, that's a bookend, so I'll, I'll come back to that. So, one is, item one is, continue the Performing Arts at the Brand Library and Arts Center on Friday nights. Number two is, continue the Beyond the Box, Utility Box mural program. Surprisingly, not all of the boxes in Glendale have been painted. We think, we think right now, we can, we can find about a dozen boxes, and we can probably get at least two more painting phases out of this next year. But to do that early next year, we need to get to work on it now. Aha, Art Happens Anywhere, that's, this was its inaugural year. We did have the Heidi Duckler Dance Theater at the end of August. We have, we see that, that staff and that selection committee also looked at Scott Froshauer's artwork, which will go in city parks. And we've signed a contract with him, and we expect that work to start and be ready in October. There are some other possibilities for artists for the Aha program that seem to fit. Again, staff has gone through it, but not the selection committee. More on that later, also. Temporary Art in Public Spaces, this was used for the Maryland Cool Nights program last summer. It was used for some of the funding for entertainers at the Central Library for our reopening. And it's also been used at the, what we call Two 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 East, the outdoor performances at the Downtown Central Library. There was some discussion with Commission about, you know, really, what are we trying to do with that series? Frankly, we were trying to get it off, off the ground. I met with staff a couple of weeks ago, and we discussed our audience numbers that ranged from eight, literally, a handful, to forty to fifty people. We're recommending monthly performances, putting more artists, more performers on the bill at one time, and kind of getting more synergy from our library programs. There are things like book sales, there's that monthly film program, things that go on that we didn't really take into account. So, sometimes, we would find ourselves with what appears to be a scheduling conflict, and other times, there'd be some interaction between those, the programming we have at the Downtown Central Library, and these events. I, I did mention I was going to bookend the Brand Associates. What I saw up at Brand Library were some real clever use of Brand Associate member-only events. They happened twice, I believe. They were successful for a number of reasons. There's wine and cheese, it's always good. But it was a special membership benefit that the Associates were able to take advantage of. At the same time, it brought a nice energy to those Brand events. We're never lacking for, for an audience, but it was a fun audience to have there. And we were able to kind of build on, on the Brand Associates' energy for their, their event, and add that to the, to the library event, you know, to the, to the performance. So, we want to do more of that. That's, that's, we think, is a good way to, to build this, this performance series. We've looked at other nearby venues, including Central Park, and also the Paseo, right next to Mona, the Museum of Neon Art. And we are suggesting that we have a, kind of a holiday event in early December in that Paseo. Include the Friends of the Libraries' book sale. You know, their bookstore is right next door to that now, in the back of the building. And perhaps some children's events, perhaps even have a table for the Public Art Master Plan. You know, something to, to really bring a lot of activity into one spot for a, a good chunk of time, and to use all of our resources, not just the money that we get from Commission to put performers there. So, that's, that's my bookend. There are, there are not that many programs, really, to continue on. But to do that, we need the funding to carry over, so that we can get to work for early next year. That's my report.
Chuck, is the, I think this year, this fiscal year, the Brand Associates did three thousand dollars contribution to the Plaza series. And, and we certainly, the group would like to increase that in the future. Is that amount included?
No, this is all, money's from the Urban Art Fund.
This is from the Urban Art Fund, okay.
Strictly Urban Art funding, that's what you'd be considering.
Okay. So, does that mean that, let's say, if we gave five thousand dollars, that that would increase the budget for the program? Or just be able to take less out of the Urban Art Fund?
Uh, we. In the past, we basically took less, so the Urban Art Fund didn't have to fund specific programs.
Which is kind of what we thought.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's how it's worked the last four years. But, again, we met with Brand staff and talked to them about what they wanted to do that was a little different, what other facilities needs they want up there. And so, they may actually come to the Associates with a slightly different query for, you know, what, what, what that money should be used for. But they, they enjoy your participation, and it certainly helps the, fund these programs here after here.
We did get more members for, from those two events, too, which is more money?
Yeah.
And, and involvement, we hope, so, okay.
Yes.
My first question is, if we do approve this program, are we still going to wait till Master Plan?
No, this would be to bridge from now until, whenever the Master Plan is done. So, we would continue with planning for the Brand Performance Series.
Utility Boxes.
The Utility Boxes, the Aha program, and the.
Gas Station.
No, the gas station's not part of this. The Two 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 East, or the Downtown Central.
Okay. All right, then I will only discuss those three matters.
Yeah, four, four items.
What refers to the performing at Brand Library? Because of the past few years' success, I would definitely suggest to increase the budget, not because we want to hire better performers, but to find a better seating venue, not, not venue, a better seating arrangement, or the stage. We are getting over a hundred fifty people, and that entryway, that small plaza area, it's very small. So, increasing the budget would probably bring something, a better staging area, or different, within the park. And I love the setting of Brand Library, it gives you that attraction. But we need to figure it out somehow to accommodate maybe three and four hundred people. I don't know how, but that's my intention is. The performances are excellent, I enjoy whenever I go, and I see people, that they are coming half hour, an hour early to reserve a seat, that means there's a demand for it. And also, what refers to the selection of the, the group? I've been on the committee, and I'm very happy. Excuse me. We need to find other outlets, or other groups, to reach out, to have a more variety groups. This is regarding the performing art. What refers to the Beyond the Box, the Utility Boxes? I'm all for it. If we can find more boxes, fine. If we cannot find more boxes, let's ask the city to build more boxes, maybe, so we can paint them. What I would suggest regarding this project is the selection procedure. Just one example, when I was selecting the last group, and I've noticed that somehow, we missed the system. Everybody was only voting, but it was already selected somehow. We, the staff, or the city, or somebody has to come up with a better selection system, a group discussion, maybe, per artwork, or something, other than just yes and no. We need to come up with that idea. The Aha performance, it's an excellent idea. I think fifty thousand dollar budget, we need to utilize all of them. There are so much opportunity to use that all. And finally, on the temporary art, we have a lot of money to do this. And I remember we discussed about street crossing. I'm still all for it, it's not part of this, but I'm, I don't know if we can accomplish that within this budget. Even if we need to increase it, I know, I remember we discussed about seventy thousand dollars was not enough, maybe. But even if we come up with more funding for the cross, street crossing, it worth it. I think it will last for over maybe a year and a half or two. And there are many intersections that, there are thousands and thousands of people crossing the street, so we probably make a statement with that. I just want to throw that there, if we can, go for it. All right, that's all.
So, I want to ask a couple of questions. So, on the, on the mural program, I agree, I think, if we can set it up so that, and I know, between scheduling and when we get the submissions, it's a little bit challenging, but in-person meeting, because I think that would be great, because you get the feedback from the other people, their perspective, why they prefer one versus the other, instead of kind of a cold vote on it. And then, also, the, so this plan will run through a couple of years. The, we had talked about a couple of different things, branding the boxes, and also, potentially setting up like a walking tour, where we can actually show off the boxes, bring the artists. Will this budget allow, if let's say, one year from now, we actually implement that? Or will we then have to wait till both the Public Art Master Plan is done, and also, this work plan? work plan is done?
Let me clarify something. So the intent of this is to get us through the Public Art Master Plan. Once we're, we get the recommendations and agree to the recommendations of that, then we will convene and we will develop the 1719 work plan. So this, this gets us through maybe March or April.
Yeah.
And, but then, then we'll have, the next step will be to do the work plan for the next two years.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I just wanted, so I want to apologize first to staff, because I got a couple of different things mixed up, and there's a, there's a reason why, though. So we had a discussion about the gas station last time, and it's the one project that we're involved with, where we have a committee, Commissioner Oshagun and myself, but it's not funded through the Urban Art Fund. And so there, you know, it's a little bit of a gray area. So I just wanted to clarify, because there is a, in the report, that we're going to be getting back a recommendation to use AHA funds to start funding that project, is that correct?
Yeah, and the reason we did it that way, another clarification, the reason we did it that way is because there still needs to be discussion among the commission as to how to manage the, the gas station through the Urban Art Fund. You know, how much to pay the artists, you know, how many shows, et cetera, et cetera. So we've, we felt like, okay, we'll get us through probably February using this funding, and we have an artist that we'd like you to consider at some point. And then, once again, getting back to the next work plan, then probably next month, well, not probably, next month, we will bring this item to you as a discussion, how should we handle the, the gas station through the Urban Art Fund.
Okay, great, thank you.
I, I just had one, this is great, thank you very much for the report, especially for a new commissioner, I'm still learning what's going on.
We're still learning, too.
But, and I appreciate everybody's input, too, it's really helping me. I was wondering, this came up in Adams Hill, there are two utility boxes that are not owned by the city. One, I think, is a cable box, and one is a, an AT&amp;T box, and I'm, and I think there are quite a few of these boxes around, and I was wondering if there was some way that either one of us, and I would certainly volunteer, if you needed volunteer help, if we could approach the owners of the other boxes and see if, and think, I can't remember, was it Yvonne, were you, I can't remember who researched that for me, if it was you or somebody in Public Works, but somebody did identify those boxes for Adams Hill and say, you know, have at it, if you want to try to get them to join, join the program. Is there some way we could work that out, or help to make that happen?
Sure, that's a possibility. We've actually worked with county in the past. What, what it amounts to is putting in place legal documents that, that pretty much allow the owner to get rid of the artwork or the box, for whatever reason they need to. That's, that's a main piece, working with somebody else's property. Then, you know, if, well, I'd have to explore it. I have to talk to AT&amp;T, or Sprint, or whoever's out there and has those boxes. They're not the only ones, there's lots of boxes out there. AT&amp;T, a lot of cable companies use, use the boxes, they're often bundled with, with different, different groups, different businesses using the boxes. We can, we can explore that and see what kind of, what kind of a reaction we, we get from them. But, but mostly it'll be, you know, can we get rid of the artwork if we don't like it? You know, and are you agreeable to that? I mean, their, their needs are, we have to have a working box, just like our Public Works Department. So we had to convince Public Works that this was a great idea, too, and they're very happy with these boxes, just as, as the community, but it's a little different working with a private entity, so we can, we can give it a whirl.
And we've had some runaway boxes before that were removed after.
Runaway boxes, yeah.
Or addition box.
I mean, it's, it's certainly doable, they can only, only say no.
If you want to use the ones on Adams Street as a trial balloon to see how it goes, I, you know, there are people in the community who would be happy to help in any way they can.
Okay, all right.
So do we need a motion to approve this? Oh, the budget? Do we need a motion to approve the budget?
So this is a proposal, a budget proposal for the, for the coming year, it's just not a report, is that right, Chuck?
Yes.
It's an action item.
Basically, the fiscal impact is to use a certain amount of the remaining funds from the 1517 work plan and allocate them to continue programming into 2018 with these specific items from the 1517 work plan.
So I guess I have a still clarification, sorry, I, perhaps it's too early in the morning, but, so the, the gas station, do we have another artist lined up for the gas station? Installation, next, or no?
We have a suggestion, but we need to get the committee together to talk about it.
Right, because I think when Terry and I met, we, we approved up to this current artist, right? So next, we don't have somebody approved to go on the space. So the suggestion is we use AHA funds, perhaps, to bring this person in.
And to bridge, to bridge ourselves, just like we're trying to do with the budget, get them in there. He said he's available January, February, and by then, we will perhaps have decided what to do with artists in the gas station, moving forward.
And that, that report we'll bring back in October, in terms of the discussion item about...
November, October.
And so our relationship with this artist would be different than previous gas station artists, that is, would he be paid, it would be through AHA, as AHA artists?
That's what we're, we're suggesting, but the, your committee has not met.
Okay, okay, thank you for the clarification.
I'll make a motion to move the work plan?
I'll second.
I'll let you second it.
I'll second. You'll second.
Commissioners Sahakian?
Yes.
Sherekian?
Yes.
Vidor?
Yes.
Chairperson Oshagun?
Yes.
Action, I'm sorry, action item 5B2, review and select, I'm sorry, review and selection committee appointments.
Staff is recommending that the Arts and Culture Commission approve the recommended assignment of commissioners on the review and selection committees for each of the programs and projects below. Because Commissioner Dever's position was left vacant, we are missing her assistance on these committees. They include the AHA Committee, currently, we have only Commissioner Oshagun. We have the pop-up arts program, let's call that 222 East. Again, we only have Commissioner Oshagun serving on that. And the temporary art in public spaces, we have only Commissioner Derhovanesian serving on that. So you've, you've seen the work plan that we've, that you just ratified to, to carry us through, so we do need some, some help with the selection committees, specifically for AHA. So there's no costs associated with this, but you need to find a commissioner to help out the other commissioner on those assignments.
So I can go over the commissions we have, and who is, which commissioners are currently on, on these committees, not committees, especially for perhaps new commissioners and people like me who always forget who's on what committee? So the cultural and performing arts series, which is the Brand Art Series, right? It is Derhovanesian and Sherekian. On the murals and on utility boxes, it is Commissioner Sherekian and Sahakian. Okay, and as Chuck said, pop-up arts, used to be Commissioner Dever and myself, and currently just myself. And then temporary art in public spaces is Commissioner Derhovanesian and, and Dever, who is no longer, so there's only one person, one person on that committee. AHA is currently also just myself, and then the Adams Park Mini, Mini Park Gas Station Committee is Commissioner Sahakian and Commissioner Oshagun. So unless people want to switch, which is also completely possible, if you want to try something different, a different committee, we can switch that, or we can keep the ones we have now, which are two commissioners, and then replace, replace, yeah, fill the other three commission, committee spots that were vacated by Terry.
Well, I'd certainly, since, you know, I'm the only one that isn't on a selection committee, too, the easy thing is to replace Terry, but if people want to change, I can, you know, like, I can go on AHA. I think the gas station thing now is part of AHA.
Well, I mean, maybe you like to be, since it's your neighborhood, right? Maybe gas station makes sense for you to be on the gas station committee?
Is there a separate gas station committee, or is there like an AHA selection committee?
I like the name Gas Station.
We, we could hold off on the gas station committee because we're not quite there yet, and, you know, just consider AHA at the moment, the gas station.
Right, yeah, because that's going to fold in anyway, okay.
Sounds like we're going to make money.
Yeah, it sounds like the gas station committee is going to invest millions of dollars.
It's the Adams Hill, it's the Adams Square Mini Park. Sounds a little more feasible. Okay, I would be happy to be on the AHA committee if there's, it needs a person.
Yeah, so the Adams Square Mini Park Committee can, can be on hold for now, then? But it's just myself and, and Sean, if there is any meeting, then they say, but, so anybody want to switch committees?
I would like to stay on those two committees, if you don't mind, the, the Brand Library and the boxes.
Okay. And Sean?
I'm only on two committees now, so I don't know if that means with the merger of I'm okay staying until, I know we do this traditionally in January, but I'll, I'm only going to be on one committee then, at this point. Unless we want to do a switch for AHA.
So Adams Park, one, two, three, four, five. We have five committees, ten spots, with five people, each person should be on two, right? So...
No, really.
Let's see, then.
I'm a blank slate, I haven't been on any, so everything is going to be a learning experience.
Okay, so Tracy, oh, Tracy, Terry was on three committees, which are still not, which is not an Adams Square Mini Park Committee. So we can have Sean, you fill one of Terry's, one of Terry's spots, and then we can have Arlene fill two of Terry's spots, and then everybody would be on two committees at that point. So pop-up arts, temporary art in public, pop-up arts is 22 East Harvard Street, right, is performances, which, which seems to be, are going to be more interesting now, being in the Paseo, and I think it seems like a really collaborative kind of project going on, I think that, that's a really good direction for that. Temporary art in public spaces is, what exactly? What does that entail?
Well, temporary art is 222 East.
Oh, sorry.
Pop-up...
Pop-up is...
Pop-up actually wasn't part of the...
The plan.
The budget.
The plan, okay. Okay, so, so pop-up arts is just kind of...
Hold.
I guess that's kind of deep freeze also, is that right, Chuck?
I don't know what we used it for.
Now.
Now, yeah.
Until the master plan comes up.
Yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll leave it to Commissioner Vidor, if you pick the top two that you want to be on, I'll, I'll take the third one.
Say it again. Are you agreeable into any committee?
So there's AHA, and there's temporary, public spaces, and then pop-up art, I mean, there's those, those three that are available, you guys, between the two, the two of you, there's three...
If you have no preference, we'll do scuff about it, I'll take, I'll take temporary art in public spaces, I'll take the third one.
Temporary art in public spaces?
Whoever's left, I'm there.
And then, so, and then you're on pop-up arts, and AHA.
Okay.
Got that?
Got it. Are the commissioner, the two commissioners on the team, the, is that the selection committee, or are there other people?
And staff.
And staff.
And staff, yeah.
Can you run through that again? Who's on first?
So...
The second.
So the first one remains the same, Commissioner Derhovanesian and Commissioner Sherekian, Art and Cultural Performing Arts Series, murals and utility boxes, still Sherekian and Sahakian. On pop-up arts, then, it's going to be Arlene Vidor and myself. Temporary art in public spaces, it will be Sahakian and Derhovanesian. And AHA will be Vidor and myself. And Adams Square Mini Park is, is myself and Sahakian, but it's kind of deep freeze right now, so that, that perhaps is not going to have any meetings until next year or sometime later, so.
So let's have a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to approve the committee members for the selection, five selection committees, as stated.
I'll second. I'll third.
Commissioners Sahakian?
Yes.
Sherekian?
Yes.
Vidor?
Yes.
Chairperson Oshagun?
Yes.
Item six, commission staff comments.
I welcome comments, I, excuse me that I made comments earlier out of place. Michael is her, her, my name, that says Michael.
Then you got me going.
Thank you for me, all right, anybody like to make comments?
I'll make, I'll make a few related to events. One I already did mention, and that was our intention at the Brand Associates to have an industry night, and we talked about that earlier, so we're going to work on that, and maybe even accelerate the timeframe for that. We also have some, had some preliminary discussion about having a closing event for Brand 45, which would include a, a panel discussion of some kind. Deb Thompson is very enthusiastic about doing that, so we will provide further information on that. We had, I believe, over a thousand people show up on opening night for the Brand 45 exhibit, and the vibes were really great there, it was a very entertaining and, and fun, energetic evening, especially with street food cinema in the park at the same time, so the place was really hopping. On August 19th, the Adams Hill migrant exhibit, the Neighborhood Association had an event to support that, and there were about 40 people there, and that was very enjoyable. And then I'd like to mention the, the Craftsman Tour, if possible, for the Glendale Historical Society, because I felt like this year there was really some sense of how much architecture and craftsman architecture has a lot to do with the arts and crafts movement, how important architecture is in our city, and we're not focused on that specifically, but it does play an important role in making sure that aesthetics and, and the beauty of the city and desirability of the city are maintained. So I just wanted to compliment the Historical Society on that. And I missed this somehow, so...
Oh, it's still, it's still there.
It's still there, yeah. Didn't make it to the opening, though.
Any other comments? Yes?
Just piggyback on that, the migrant exhibition was great to see, and if you haven't seen it...
Thank you for coming.
Of course, and it's a series of kind of miniature figures, and I think in kind of our times right now, when I think politically we're being split apart in a million different directions, I think it's a really great exhibit that shows how people can come together. So if you have a chance, I'd definitely recommend going to it, and we had a chance to honor Commissioner Dever as well for her service, so it was great to see her, and have a chance to do that with Commissioner Vidor, so that's all.
I just have a concern. Was it on Tuesday, the city council passed a new resolution regarding the commissioners' turn? And I don't know if any of us will be affected on that, none?
No, I, I talked to city clerk, the city website is up to date, and it indicated that each of you served one time, one four-year term. Commissioner Derhovanesian had the number three next to it, so you can serve four in total, so nothing changes for a little while here.
Just to clarify, that's all.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? No? Next item?
Item seven, written communications.
You don't have any?
No.
Then we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.